This is the regular meeting of the Asbury Park Planning Board. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. Excuse me. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on matters listed below. Marie, call order?
I will now take roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Here.
Jim Henry's absent. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor is running late. Eric Gallopo. Daniel Shenemeo is absent. Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Chairman Barbara Kerzak is also absent.
Skip the, uh, salute to the flag, so let's do that now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is resolution approving amendments to the preliminary final site plan for 527 bangs avenue. Any discussion?
Any comments on 527 bang resolution, anyone?
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, the first item on our agenda.
I do. Barbara Kerzak is absent. Councilwoman Clayton.
To approve the vote?
Approved. She, well, she's.
She made the motion, I second it.
Okay. Let's just go through the list. Got it. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
And Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo absent. Daniel Shenemeo is absent. And, um, that would be it.
I say yes, too.
Oh, you are.
Okay, the first, excuse me, the first application, there's been a request by applicant to carry it to the December 12th meeting with new notices. Do we need a motion to that?
Yeah, you can, sure.
Okay, I'm move.
Second. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Eric, Vice Chair Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Second item is 917 Third Avenue, Block 302, Lot 11, by 917 Third Avenue LLC to reconstruct building to accommodate retail service use and construction of a parking lot at the rear of the building.
Chairman, I've looked at the notices in that matter. Are we in good order? We have jurisdiction to proceed with the file tonight?
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Donner. I am the principal of Donner Law. My office is right over on the east side of the circle. The fieldman building between the car wash and the old family restaurant. I'm a graduate of Asbury Park High School, but personally, out of 50 years of practicing and going to planning boards of the entire state, this is my maiden voyage in Asbury Park.
Welcome.
This is an application, just to our office, as the principal of MA 917 LLC, of the service tonight. We have our engineer, A.J. Garito, Garito. We have our architect, Mr. Edward O'Neil. And we have our planner, Mr. Andrew O'Neill. And we're talking about, don't get me in a quote, in 1929, you know, it's 917 Third Avenue. And so, over the years, the building has seen some better days and some better times. But Mr. Marcus, who has purchased the building a number of years ago, had two tenancies in the area. It emerged as a public business, a minor warehouse.
Speak into the microphones and make sure we can hear you. Is it getting picked up? Okay. Better? Thank you.
And a minor warehouse business now sought to put in a health club. And because of that, we've been to be a sales and retail operation, which has resulted in the site plan, which in turn has resulted in my client's commitment to substantially upgrade this building. So what we're going to present to you tonight is the plans that we have to redo the exterior of the building and make it look something special. Do the interior a little differently in terms of this health club, which is a relatively small operation. And also upgrade the other two tenancies to make sure it all conforms with what the standards are of Asbury Park. We are going to need a number of variances, and we're going to need a number of design waivers, because the planner is very diligent in Asbury Park, and she took a hard look at her books and standards for the city. And she let us know about everything that we needed to do. But I will also say that many, if not most, if not just about all of them, are due to existing conditions at this building. And so, we do have some limitations. But with that said, we are going to make, and we have made, I think, a significant effort to build it, bring this building up to standard, and to commit this building to the improvement of Asbury Park. And my client is committed to that end, and I hope you'll agree with our, with our presentation. That being said, I'd like to call, as our first witness, our professional engineer, Mr. A.J. Garito.
Sir, please raise your writing. Salute and swear. Testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name for the record and spell it.
My name is A.J. Garito, G-A-R-I-T-O. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Two River Engineering in Full Snappy, Jersey. I have 265, we're building for Full Snappy, Jersey. I testify on numerous planning and building boards throughout the states. Not in some time, but I've been in this work before. I'd like to present Mr. Garito as our expert in professional engineering.
Okay.
Proceed. Proceed. Thank you so much. Mr. Garito, I'd like you to outline for us what the site plan you put together for this project depicts, just generally, what you're thinking. Sure. Sure. Yeah, I can do that. Yes. Okay. The property address is 917 Third Avenue in the city of Asbury Park. It's about a third of an acre in area. It's located in the B business zone. Currently, there's an existing approximately 6100 square foot masonry construction, masonry commercial building on the property. It has a, basically a concrete parking lot in the front of the building located off of Third Avenue. The rear of the building did have an area of concrete and two other smaller structures. Sort of since when I started this project, the rear of the building, those two accessory buildings have been removed, and much of the concrete in the rear has been removed. Most of the improvements have to do with interior to the renovations of the building itself, and Mr. O'Neil, the project architect, will describe those. As far as the exterior improvements, we're proposing a, basically a whole new parking lot in the rear of the building, as well as in the front of the building, removing the existing concrete area and providing asphalt there with a striped parking lot along the front. The rear of the building, there's a shared access drive along the westerly property line with Lot 12 that'll access the rear of the property. Some minor landscaping is proposed along the northerly side of the property or rear of the property. New lights are proposed on the building. There'll be building mounted lights. And a small drainage system located in the rear of the property, which is basically consists of a series of inlets with a perforated pipe in a stone trench to collect the stormwater, provide as much infiltration as we can. Other flows would bubble out and flow down the access drive towards Third Avenue.
Excuse me. Mr. Garito, are you testifying from your site plan?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we get that marked? Is there any?
Sure. The, uh, I have an exhibit, too. That's just a photo of it. But basically, the exhibit is, it's just a colored rendering of sheet 307, the site plan dated May 16, 2022, and it's revised 10/24/22.
You prepared your remarks?
I prepared, yes.
Okay. All right, so we make it A1.
So what I'd like to do, the engineer's given us a comprehensive letter review, so I'd like to adapt Mr. Garito's testimony, so he can answer those questions in order. So by the time we're done with his testimony, we'll have answers to the engineer.
Okay. Engineer, all right, so we're gonna, you're gonna go off the second engineering review dated November 17?
Yes, sir.
I don't remark our, our insight report, this is done 17/22 as B1. Let's get both Doug and Mike to sworn, so that, in case they have to answer any questions. Gentlemen, please raise your writing. Salute and swear. Testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Michael Sullivan, board planner, for Kaden's.
Doug Collin, inside engineering, board engineer.
Great. Okay.
Before we start, I have a question. Did you say that the existing parking lot in the front is going to be removed and asphalt parking lot be put down, or are you just gonna recover what's existing?
Yes, and if you can kind of, if you see in the exhibit there, the area in the front that's shaded gray, that's all concrete now. And I have some photos, too, I can maybe show, too. But that's to be removed and asphalt put in its place.
Okay. All right, ma'am. For the record, Alexis Taylor has arrived, and she only missed about three or four minutes. Mr. Donner, I don't think you mind it.
Not at all.
Alexis Taylor.
Okay.
You didn't miss much.
So as long as Mr. Garito commented on the asphalt from the concrete, what's there now is essentially concrete blocks, is that true? Yes. And those blocks have been worn down quite a bit, have they? Yes. And are there any spaces between them, or grass is growing between them and all that, to a certain extent? Yeah, maybe, like I said, maybe I can just show some of the photos of the property to supplement.
You have the photos, I think that you could add.
The first photo is kind of standing in that access drive, looking towards Third Avenue. You can see the concrete out front. This photo is sort of in the same area, but looking back into the site, this shows the access drive. Our building is on the right here, painted black at the time. So that was the left-hand side? This is the left, if you're looking at the property, left-hand side of the building. The next photo is looking easterly towards Main Street. One of the engineers' comments is just about site distance, and this looks easterly, and you can see it's, Third Avenue is relatively flat, and there's plenty of site distance. Next photo, this is the rear of the building, as it looks today. There were a couple of old buildings on the property here that's since been removed, and concrete here was currently removed also. Our building is sort of to the right of that photo. This photo is taken, once again, at the rear of the building. The building, our building is the right here. This shows the rear yard where we're proposing a new parking lot.
How long ago were those structures removed, if you know?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure, maybe two years ago, year and a half ago. My client or your architect can correct me if I'm wrong. Another photo of the rear of the property. This is a photo standing in front of the property, looking westerly. Once again, kind of illustrating the site distance, looking the other opposite direction. Here's a decent photo of the front of the property showing the concrete parking lot and access, which, like I said, parking spaces, and this area is going to be removed, and asphalt is going to be placed in that area.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Are there some sort of weird visual artifacts on these photographs that we're seeing, all the red?
Nah, I think that's just the, it's not on my screen.
Oh, okay.
It's just the HDMI cable or something, I'm not really sure what's interfering with it.
Okay.
And the last photo is showing the lot to the east, which is just grass at this time. Going back to the very first photo, now, the one which is the driver going down the left-hand side of the building. Now, is that also where the access easement is located? Correct. On there, okay. There were some questions that the engineer had, and early on, Ms. Alonso had, about whether we really had an easement, and I have supplied that easement of records in a deed that went to one of our predecessor owners, and I've marked it out on the deed where that access easement is. And this afternoon, I think I gave to Mr. Serpico and Ms. Alonso a copy of that deed again, just to make sure they would have it. And also, Bosker Zoo, coffee company, next door, they have given us a letter acknowledging that easement, and also that they have no objection to our project. So I'm just trying to make that for the record. All right, so going back, you mentioned the stormwater, and in my earlier letter, you said stormwater is supposed to be captured with inlets in the rear parking area that ultimately flow to a bubbler inlet, which will overtop and flow into the existing driveway easement. Can you explain that a little more, and whether that deviates from what the current drainage management? Yeah, currently, there's, there's no stormwater management structures or facility in the rear of the property. Ultimately, the water will flow out along the, along the westerly side of the building on the Third Avenue. As you can see, the building pretty much takes up the whole property from east to west, and the water's not going to go northerly, because that goes upgrading. So we're proposing just to provide some underground source, some infiltration, and any larger storms would, you know, simply bubble out of the bubbler, we're on pointing here, and flow down the drive. Your engineer requested, you know, if we're going to rely on permeability, maybe some soil testing, we'd certainly comply and do some soil testing. The board would approve the application. He also mentions possibly connecting it to a storm sewer system on the Third Avenue. There is a storm sewer, a storm sewer inlet located down here, a little easterly of the property. We prefer not to run pipes down and onto Third Avenue, just from a cost perspective. At least what we're proposing is going to be, we're improving the situation where it is today. But whatever details the engineer needed, we'd be happy to work them out with him. Based on your observations, though, the water that's making the floor of property is not going to harm, is it going to harm any adjacent property? That's question number one, and then question two, will it find its place ultimately on Third Avenue in one of the stormwater inlets? Yes, I don't think it'll, it'll harm or have any detrimental drainage impacts to the property to the, to the west, and it will find its way down the access drive towards Third Avenue. All right, continuing on with the engineer's letter.
Could I just make one quick clarification? Nothing you guys said, I just, there was a bit of an omission in our report. I think when I, originally I did the review, I don't know if it maybe just wasn't clear to me at the time, but the stormwater standard that applies is the minor development, so that's 30-58.7. And it doesn't change a whole lot in terms of, you know, what you have to comply with, but I didn't realize at the time initially that you were disturbing more than 5,000 square feet of land. So there's a paragraph in our report that summarizes what standards apply, and it would be the minor development. So, that's it.
Appreciate that. All right. Moving on, we read the letter from the engineer. His request for a copy of the survey, reference on the site plan, we will provide that survey if we can comply. Yes, we will.
Jeff, can we go down by numbers, so we have?
Yeah. Page two, page two, paragraph one in the middle of the page. And paragraph, I think it jumps to four, from one to four. All existing utilities within 200 feet of the subject property have not been provided. Are we asking for a waiver for that, and if so, what's the basis for our request? We're not proposing any new utility connections as far as sewer, water, gas, or electric. Those existing facilities will remain. We do show the nearest fire hydrant, which is located somewhat east of the property that is shown in the site plan. So we ask for a waiver from showing, you know, all utilities around the property. I don't think it's really applicable to this, to this project. So rather than showing all the utilities within 200 feet, which is not necessarily relevant to the local use of the project, would you ask for a reasonable question? Paragraph five, we talked about this easement agreement for the joint use of a driveway that runs between Lot 11 and Lot 12, so we technically cut that. Moving on, page three, testimony showing this driveway, which is a decision to make for site maintenance, do this or not? Sure, I mean, the maintenance of the property is usually taking care of the parking lot, drainage facility, and the minor landscaping. A simple truck could go to the back of the property, a pickup truck to maintenance the drainage facilities, which really don't require much maintenance, and to cut the grass or to trim the hedges, and certainly to plow the rear of the building, so the cycle would function maintenance-wise. So those bubbler inlets that you designed, would maintenance also include checking on them periodically, just to make sure they're not clogged? Yeah, checking on them periodically and unclogging them, or if they fill up with any kind of sediment periodically. So it would be fair to say that this is a fairly maintenance-free project, the way you're saying? Yes. We have item seven on page three. We have a colorized site plan during this presentation, period. Moving on now. I remember eight. Could you say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. The request at seven was that we present a colorized rendition of the site plan. So here it is. Item eight is a testimony regarding whether we're going to have any external mechanicals. Can you answer that? Yes, it's, it's fine, they're saying there's no external mechanicals. I did note on my plan, if for some, any architect could expand further, if for some reason something had to go on the roof, it would be properly screened, so it wouldn't be visual to, to anyone. Would it also be contaminated with air and stuff back on the roof, so you wouldn't necessarily see it? Correct.
Gas meters and electric meters are right in the back, or?
I'm not sure, like I said, maybe the architect. I believe Mr. O'Neil can address that. Water on the side. Look like side. I believe Mr. O'Neil can address that, but as a spoiler alert, I believe it's all inside, and each of the premises is the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, so there's no need for external insulation. Moving forward, item number nine, permanent parking between a building and a public street, that is a design waiver that we have noticed for our requesting. Item 10. Just, just to kind of note on nine, with, at least with the removing of the existing concrete, and there's, as you can see in the red, and there's the asphalt, and then we kind of ended the asphalt where the sidewalk would be extended, so at least there's a visual change there that hopefully breaks up that, that kind of sea of concrete there. That's kind of the best we can do, because that's. So if you're going to extend the sidewalk in concrete, and then you'll have? Sidewalk is going to be concrete, and then the driveway and the pavement area will be asphalt, so. Item 10 on page three, I wanted to defer our comments to that, because I'd like Mr. Marcus to come to the stand briefly, and then we'll, Mr. Garito, to just address that. Okay. There's street numbering, they're oversized, but there, there's a story behind that, I wanted to share that with you. Item 12 on page three, to Mr. Garito, the architect. Item 13 on page four, request to, keep testimony about pedestrian particular movements on site. Mr. Garito, do you have a point? Yeah, once, once again, there's really not much we could, we could change with that. We removed the concrete, provided at least the asphalt, so that there's a visual barrier of the parking lot and the sidewalk. And obviously, the asphalt will be under better repair than what the existing concrete is in that area. So hopefully, we addressed that to the best, to the best we could. We did put bumper stops along the building. There will be a concrete sidewalk along the building, too. So at least the parking lot will be a little better delineated. We'll have, it'll be striped, we'll have a striped handicap accessible spot, which will be constructed in accordance with federal handicap ADA regulations, and also a spot for a future charging station.
Is, is the building occupied now, and does it operate kind of in the same way that you're proposing currently, or? Because I, I mean, I noticed, looking on Google Street View and looking at the site, that some cars do park along the front of the building now. Is that, is it currently parking, or is that just people from different properties parking there, or?
I mean, it's, I believe that's where they park. I'm not sure if there's, I don't believe there's any tenants currently in the building. No, no, there's, there's three spaces in the building, and two are occupied. We have a, a commercial photography business on the far right premises, and we have a light warehouse that basically stores food pallets, and that's it, in the center. And the health club, which has triggered the site plan, it will be on the far left. It is occupied now. An issue came up, and I answered it from Ms. Alonso. Bosker, I don't remember mispronouncing. We have let them park their trucks on a temporary basis only, okay? And, and Ms. Alonso comes, just this much, comes right to our attention. I said, it's only temporary, just temporary accommodation. We have no intent or desire to have to park those, their vehicles on the, on our parking lot before users of the premises, or customers. But yes, certain tenants are parking there now, but we're in the process of, through this application, if it is approved, we're going to substantially upgrade this entire building, it's a lot different.
What's the width of your driveway from the side there?
We'll get to that, but I believe it's 103 feet, or 46 feet are normally permitted. But again, that's, that's an existing condition. We didn't recreate that.
You're asking about the driveway on the side? Driveway, yeah.
Oh, on the side? I thought you meant all the way.
No, on the side.
It's 12 feet.
12 feet, without the sidewalk? Is the sidewalk next to the driveway as well, right?
Is there a sidewalk going by, on the back there? Along the west, east, the westerly side, the access drive? Yeah. I mean, it's, actually, it's, I mean, it's just concrete. It's, it's four feet from our property line, and it's a five-foot easement on the neighbor's property, so really a nine-foot easement.
So it's just, so it's not, it's just nine feet of cattle length for a vehicle, right?
Yes. Right. That's what it is, and I think five, five feet are under that access easement on Lot 12, and the four feet are already on our property, Lot 11. But what, but the planner, I believe, considers our whole front of driveway, too. And I think that's 150 feet or 46 feet are permitted in the zone, but it's an existing condition, we didn't create that. Okay. What, the engineer, item 14 on, on page four, for engineer, says a two-foot wide area of full-depth pavement repair shall be indicated wherever curb is proposed to be replaced or constructed. Do we, do we have any plans to replace any, any curb or other concrete area that's off-site that would be, or in the public improvement? No, we're not proposing any, any curb replacement. We're adding some curbing along the rear of the property to delineate the rear parking lot, and just bumper curbs along, along the front, but we're not removing any curbing.
So in that instance, if you're not, that's, that's fine. I would just ask that the curb detail and the pavement prepared detail be on the plan in the event something's damaged during construction.
And I believe we also have a note about infrared inspection, to make sure that nothing is damaged. If there's damage, we have committed to repair, to place. I'll put a standard two-foot curb, if curb along the road is damaged, I'll put a standard curb, you know, curb and pavement repair detail. Okay. All right. Not the same as 15. And then, I think 15 is part of that, we just answered that. So moving on to 16, this, this is the design waiver that we have asked for, but the illumination levels, as the engineers noted, in some areas exceed the 0.1-foot candle. And can you explain why that is so? It's just, the, the building is right up, pretty much right on the property line, so we're proposing 10-foot building mounted lights. In a few spots, it, it might exceed the 0.1-foot candles, but it's very minimal.
In a few spots, it, it might exceed the point-one foot candles, but it's very minimal. Probably exceeds it more along the access drive, but we sort of like to light up the access drive, so that's five feet, at least that's off the property. So if there's any adjustments to those photometrics, we'll, we'll try to make them. I'm not exactly sure what the, the second comment about the, the temperature, but I'll talk to my, our, our lighting consultant, and we, we could address that. That's just a technical comment.
We, we will comply with that for me temperature of point seven.
So, so, so you, you know, sitting here, that you, the, you can have a light fixture that meets that specification without going back and wanting to come back with a different fixture?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can, if I can get it to be point one.
I'm talking about the color temperature.
The color temperature, I, I'm comfortable with providing.
With the same fixtures you're, you're showing now?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if the fixture might have to change.
I don't think we specified a specific fixture yet.
No, I did, but I mean, it'll be, it'll be a wall-mounted fixture, but.
In a full cutoff?
Full cutoff, correct.
Because if you change them out, you're going to have to do a new lighting, point by point.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we will comply with that.
Yep.
All right, we covered the mapping heights and all that. Now seventeen, the item is proposing to reuse the existing utility connections, and there's testimony called for as to whether you can leave those existing things that are adequate for our needs to be.
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that, that they are adequate. I have, I have no reason to believe that they should be replaced.
Nineteen on page five, that's probably the topic for our architect to reveal about the adequacy of trash storage areas. I think he, he's also getting that, so we'll skip that for now. On twenty on page five, testimony regarding the effect of development with respect to noise, air, and water quality, and any other negative impacts to the natural environment. This is during the improvement in construction process. Can you comment on that?
I, I, it's, it's my engineering opinion that this, these improvements, if, if approved, will not provide any negative impact as far as noise, air, or water quality.
Okay. Item twenty-one, this has to do with the impervious coverage variance that we're seeking in this interview. We'll address that. I believe item twenty-one B talks about the stormwater summary. I think we have addressed that already. If there's any other questions, we're happy to answer them. That will take care of the twenty-one, B, C, and D. I think we've already addressed it. And even E, Toby had talked about some mineral infiltration, we've got the slant pipe, and if there's need to investigate the soil, we'll bring you that.
That's correct.
Parking, I think we, we were on page six now, item, item twenty-two. Item twenty-three, the engineer doesn't feel that we could add any E D space. He doesn't have to.
Yes, it's just the easterly most spot in the front parking lot. It's labeled to be a.
It's labeled on the plan.
It's labeled on the plan to be a.
Where will it be located? Can you, can you show on the plan where it's located?
It's right, right there.
Okay.
So when you're facing it, Toby, it's preferred to spot on the right. And on the plan, it does in fact note that it's a make-ready.
Got you, I see it.
Okay, that brings us to twenty-four. I believe that Mr. Guido talked about site distance and footways on third avenue. I'm sure physicians that those site distances are adequate.
Yes, it's my opinion that they're both adequate in both directions.
Now, item number twenty-six, we have asked a design waiver on this, but this is a requirement, not requirement, but a fact that it appears that vehicles parked in front of our building head onto the building will have to back out across the existing sidewalk in order to fully leave our, our property. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, once again, that's, that's an existing condition, and without removing the building, that would remain. And hopefully, like I said, removing the concrete and putting asphalt, at least it delineates it from a visual standpoint and helps improve somewhat of what, what is there today, but that's an existing condition that'll remain.
Has, has that been in fact a condition since the building was really built in nineteen twenty-nine?
That's my understanding, yes.
And, and it's, it's also functions like that most recently with the current two tenths in it?
Yes.
Item twenty-seven, I believe we addressed it briefly, but we have a, the whole front of our property is really a driveway, an old parking area.
Yes.
And it's a hundred and three feet, I believe, and forty-six feet are allowed. I think on its own, with the width of the driveway. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's really not a, a driveway, it's just parking along the front of the building, so. And the width of our property is a hundred feet, so that's why it's a hundred and three feet.
And that's an existing condition?
Yes.
Okay. Item twenty-nine, bottom page six. We have asked for a design waiver regarding proposed street trees, where one tree for fifty feet of frontage is required. Why, why are we asked for that design waiver and why?
Yeah, once again, because that's the parking lots in the front yard, so dividing street trees would just be trees in the middle of the parking lot.
Okay, moving on to page seven, item thirty. No proposed landscape screening for the front parking lot. Can you comment on that also? Did you ask for a design waiver for that?
Yeah. It's decided if we've provided, I'm sorry.
On the eastern side of the parking lot, next to that make-ready spot, there's, seems to be like a small strip of parking lot.
I, I don't, on the easterly side?
Yeah, like it looks like just a few feet. Is that, do you see what I'm talking about, adjacent to the, the make-readies?
You mean like just off, off the driveway? Where my cursor is, I'm, like, like down here?
No, right above it, right next to the make-ready. The, the make-ready doesn't go to the property line, does it? The make-ready site, the make-ready parking spot doesn't cover all the way to the property line. See, there's like a small little apron.
Or is it asphalt?
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, it's probably about four feet there if we have.
Yeah, so I mean, could like shrubs.
We could probably put a little island there and, and plant a tree in that area. Sure.
Yeah, and then put some shrubs to it, screen it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Mr. O'Neill, you'd be, you'd be satisfied, or would you be satisfied with the kind of screed that we have in the back, which are basically low-line shrubs up as opposed to four feet?
Yeah.
Wait, just a, just a, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. On the eastern side of the make-ready spot, right?
Yeah, that little, that little strip of asphalt.
Got it.
Okay, moving on to item number thirty-one on page seven. This has to do with shade trees within the parking area. Can you comment on that briefly?
The same thing as, really no room for shade trees.
But, but in the back, we have provided for certain plant.
In the back, we, yeah, we have, we have shrubs in that four-foot area between our parking lot and, and the properties to the, to the north.
Is that the whole, the whole, the whole width of the parking lot?
Actually, it wraps around the east and the west side.
Okay.
I think you're providing more parking spaces than is required, right?
I believe that was on nineteen, and I think, depends, who's doing the counting?
Like nine and ten, nine and the front and the back.
Sixteen or eighteen, but we have nineteen.
Okay, I mean, that gives you enough space in the back. You could remove two parking spaces and plant trees. Have green space for drainage and for your, your tree coverage.
I had the same question because you said, when it, when you were saying there's not enough room because of the parking lot, I was wondering, what, can't you reduce the parking lot?
And make it more attractive in the front of the building?
So you would favor the removal of one spot, and in that spot, play a shade tree? I think that's a voice consensus. We could do that, certainly.
Just, I'm not sure, should we?
Yeah, so what are you, you decided to do? What, James, what are you, what is it, what you'd like them to do specifically?
I was just suggesting, more to the board, if you, they have the opportunity to put trees in parking spaces, if they have a preference, they can make the shade, the shade coverage apartment if they just remove a few spaces there. They can have three extra spaces.
Okay.
So I mean, if they have a preference in front or back, feel free to voice it.
I have a preference for, I mean, at least one in the front because it, that area is very hot in the summer. And it's all paved right now.
So maybe take out one of the parking slots in the front and make it a landscaped island?
All right, moving forward on number thirty-two on page seven.
I just want to, how many trees? Is it just one?
Well, I think James said there was three.
I would say you have three opportunities, whatever the board feels is necessary or whatever the client has.
I mean, there seems to be room to do two. One of these ends.
That won't be too close together for, for trees?
No, you can plant them like ball-to-ball, it'll be fine.
I mean, it's a hundred, a hundred-something feet building frontage. So I think that's enough room, right? So maybe you could explore that?
Two, two trees, one of each end.
Especially since you can't provide any street trees, so that kind of helps give some break to the frontage.
Okay.
All right, moving forward on thirty-two, there was a comment about wheel stops in the rear parking area. Can you comment on that?
We're not, we're just proposing curb in the, in the rear, just the wheel stops are just in the, in the front. Are, are you asking for wheel stops or just?
I think he was asking, I think he was asking.
We have curb in the rear.
Yeah, I think, well, the ordinance requires wheel stops if there's a landscape buffer to protect it from damage.
Right.
A curb kind of does the same thing, but we usually like cars have a couple of feet overhang that could still damage it. But ultimately, neither an exception is needed.
I think we should go with the curves, I think we should go with the curb stops to protect the, to protect the landscaping.
You want the wheel stops?
Wheel stops are in the rear. Okay, thirty-three, the plan should be revised to reflect the percentage of landscape area for each uncovered parking area. So the percentages are going to change now because we had some trees, but I believe before the trees, what was the percentage of landscape?
We had zero in the front, and it was about ten percent in the rear, but now we'll have a few extra landscape areas.
Then also will affect your impervious area, too. That's what changes that calculation as well.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Item number thirty-four, testimony should be provided to describe how loading operations will occur, what type of vehicles used for delivery, at what time these deliveries occur. Turning movement plan should be provided. First, first of all, have you spoken to Mr. Marcus about this? You have an understanding of how this is going to operate? What kind of vehicle are we talking about that would be making a delivery?
Just vans, UPS trucks, things like that, no, nothing larger than that, so maybe simply pull up to the front.
They want to be tractor-trail, like a soft truck or anything like that.
You have a loading zone in the back. Do you plan on having loading or is that an off-back there?
I mean, our, our intent isn't really to, to load, and yeah, you're right, they'll say loading zone, so maybe that's.
Yeah, my only concern is.
Just maybe, maybe no parking fires on it.
Is that being used by the pallet company?
I'm sorry?
Is that being used by the pallet storage company to move pallets in and out with that loading zone?
I, I believe that the pallet movements are so.
There's nothing back there right now.
They come right through that front overhanging door that goes up and down.
I think they have large doors in front.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, it's just all grass back there, right? There's no.
Yeah, nobody's used the rear.
Yeah.
So that loading zone has been there?
No, no.
Tell your attorney.
So then we should ju, it should just be designated as fires.
The picture they did check the rest of the garage, probably no loading zone in there back now, but they did have a loading zone on the parking lot in their site plan. My only concern with that is if the driveway's nine feet and you have a van or truck trying to get back there, it's going to cut it tight. And you didn't have, in the picture, it was one utility on the side of the building that makes it probably be one hour and nine feet. That's my only concern, that that's going to be used for loading and loading up at all. It's going to be tough.
Can a turning movement plan be provided?
Yes, I mean, I, I think it's best to maybe not have a loading zone in the rear and, and, and remove that and just keep any kind of loading or, like I said.
Occur from the front.
To the front, yeah.
I also have a question, too, just thinking about turning. What provisions to keep vehicles from like turning and hitting the building, like, you know, bollards or anything that you plan to keep, to protect the, the building? Because I mean, I know, you know that's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's not there now. I guess a bumper curb would be somewhat of a deterrent. There will be some signs because there'll be a handicap sign and whatnot, but yeah, there's, you know, quite a bit. I guess if you felt bollards were required, I, I, you know, they could be on the sidewalks.
I think I saw there were, were there bollards around the gas meter? Go to your picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's wider than you think. That, that was, that was a small truck sitting in that.
Yeah, it's more than nine feet.
And it had, it had space on both sides.
I mean, it just, just to, as you get to the rear of the building, just to make sure that vehicles go a little bit further past the edge of the building before they turn, you know, not necessarily bollards on the side of the building, but at least at that back corner, you know what I mean?
At the back corner, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah. So they have to go a little ways in terms of the parking lot.
Cut the corner, hit the corner of the building up.
All right, so we're going to put a.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, makes sense.
Just, I, I have a quick question about the loading. The loading is going to take place from the front, which is what you just talked about.
And that's been the practice.
And that's, and that's where the roll-up door is for the pallet company. Are you going to keep that clear from vehicles that are parking there? How does that work? If you're parking along the building and you've got a door comes up?
I think I'm going to need Mr. Marcus to help us out on that. Let me swear to him, because I think this is a very good answer.
Why don't we call him and have him address all the questions at once? We'll finish with this witness.
Okay. We'll finish with Mr. Guido first. Thank you, Mr. Sir. All right, let's move on to thirty-five. A stop sign and a stop board shall be shown on the site plans for the driveway exit on the third avenue. Can you comment on that, please?
Sure, we, we did show a, a stop, a sign, but the driveway, we'll revise the plan to show a stop bar there also.
And then I guess in the script, the paragraph, is the stop sign should be placed inside the front parking lot with a stop board, so you gave them.
Yes.
Forty on the bottom of page seven line, testimony regarding the duty for emergency vehicles access to site, and I guess that kind of tends to be goes to the rear portion of the site. Do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I think any kind of, certainly a fire truck's not going to access the site, but a, an ambulance, whatever, would, would be accessing along the front of the site. It wouldn't go to the rear either. Basically, all the, all the tenants go from north to south.
So are you saying in order to fight a fire, for example, there's going to be for a fire truck to get behind the building?
No, a fire truck's going to stay on Flerta Avenue.
Now, in terms of sanitary sewer connection, if there's a connection fee required, would it be provided by that?
That's correct.
But is your understanding that the premises are already connected? Is that true?
My understanding, they're all connected, there will be no changes, but you certainly contact the city engineer to verify.
Okay. Now, regarding outside agency approvals, the whole list of outside agencies, which ones do you think pertain and what are we going to do about?
I mean, Monmouth County Planning Board, we should get an exemption, but we'll provide that. We'll provide certification from Freeland Civil Conservation District and any of the internal City of Asbury agencies. If they haven't commented already and we need to go to them individually, we'll, we'll certainly do that, address any of their comments that they may have.
If we could just go backwards for one second. It wasn't in our letter, but I wanted to make sure you were aware. If you're going to do infiltration with the stormwater, we would ask that any infiltration be separate, set back at least ten feet from any property line. There's a few buildings nearby. I don't know if they have basements or not, I just don't want to cause any issues in terms of water in anybody's basement. It seems pretty close to those buildings, so.
And, and that's, that's no problem.
Okay.
Great. All right, I think I've completed my direct. Mr. Guido, the board has questions.
Is the board having any questions or statements about this?
The stop sign you have right now, I think we just had it, I think we just said this in the last report. The stop sign you have right now, I think you said it, I think you said this, uh, in the last, uh, and it's passed the sidewalk towards the street. Will that and the stop bar be coming back to the property line, back to where the parking is?
You, you want the stop sign all the way up to the?
No, the building, no, I think you bet before the sidewalk probably, so you have a car.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and the stop bar should be before the sidewalk, I, I agree.
We have it in our letter to put it.
Property line, is that missing?
I agree.
Which is kind of the same thing, right?
I think it's dug up at the same spot, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, quick question, I think you handled, you answered this in the beginning of your testimony, but the reason that, uh, the recommended direct connection to Third Avenue for storm sewer infrastructure is not being per, is because it's cost prohibitive?
I mean, it's, it's, it's really collecting water for, from, the whole property is a third of an acre, it's probably a third of a third of an acre, it's probably a tenth of an acre, it's fairly minor. So, there's not a whole lot of stormwater runoff. I would not provide some calculations to your engineer as far as, you know, what kind of storage, what kind of infiltration. But I, I think I can probably document that even paving it and providing, you know, some storage in pipes in a bubbler basin is going to make the situation better than it is today. And I think that's going to be more than adequate since it's so small, um, as opposed to, you know, if we had to connect, you know, if you, you brought in, you know, a couple hundred feet of pipe down the.
Do we know if the, if that inlet connects anywhere else, is there a pipe that comes across the front of the property?
I'm, 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 I'm not sure, um, if, if there's a line that ran, I mean, it's likely there's a line that runs east-west, um, then we'd have to, you know, build a, a, a structure, um, on Third Avenue, so, um, if that's what the board or, you know, your professional want, you know, we certainly, you know, we could do that. Maybe at such time, once that kind of provides some better calculations and some permeability rates. I wouldn't mind working that with your, with your professional, and if they thought it was required, then we, we certainly would have to do that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
My one concern was with the bubbler inlet, and I understand how it's going to work, and it's definitely better than what's there currently, it seems. But when that thing over tops, uh, it seems like you could be increasing flows to one of the neighboring properties. There's not really enough topography to tell, but, um, where it comes out and goes kind of into the alleyway, that is somebody else's property, and it seems to just concentrate the flow on your neighbor's property.
Yeah, and, and the fact of the matter is, it's, it's just, it's just pretty flat there, um, so.
But did look, so did you also say that you thought the water would get to Third Avenue anyway? Because it looks like the alleyway easement is pitched such that it would flow along kind of the center line of.
So, it looked like in the picture at least, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it, it definitely flows down there.
Can you put that picture back up of the easement?
Want to see the picture?
Yeah, I think it does pitch in the center.
I mean, I would just want to make sure that your, um, back parking is accessible even when, if you're going for kind of surface flow, just making sure that the back parking is still accessible.
There, you can actually see the inlet in that picture there.
Alley.
The alleyway.
Yeah, if you go to the truck picture, the one of the, um, pickup truck.
I just can't, I'm losing my pictures.
There.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it looks like basically where those two concrete.
It looks like a little gutter.
It pitches to the joint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which makes sense, because you wouldn't have pitched it towards the building.
Right.
Anything else? Is there any questions from the public of this witness? Okay.
Okay.
Can we leave this off, or?
Sure, we may have to.
The architect maybe has some other question.
Further just. I'm sorry, speak.
Good afternoon. Sir, please raise your hand. And then, please state your name and spell it. Ari Marcus, first name spelled A R I, last name M A R C U S.
Hi, Mr. Marcus, one of the questions that came up was how the overhead door with the warehouse premises works in terms of parking in front of the back door. How is that working?
Yes, yes, thanks. Uh, so the middle tenant, the one that has the pallets, has been using the front loading zone. He understands that he's only supposed to load and unload before and after business hours. This prevents anyone from blocking the loading zone when he needs it.
So, will that still work then when the gym's?
Yes, that, that, that's how it would work when the gym's in, yes.
So, the gym is only open during?
Well, the gym's parking will be in, in, in the rear.
It's going to be designated only for gym?
Oh, it'll be, but the gym knows that they need to park in the rear.
Okay.
And it'll be signed, I mean, that was the question, the parking will be signed, so that people who come to the gym will not mistakenly park in the loading zone after hours?
Sure, yes, we can put sign in check.
And, and so, as we talk about the gym, there's this overhead door in the back, and what, what is that going to be used for? Is that, is that the door in the gym?
It's, it's more of an aesthetic look, I'm not sure if the panel's familiar with like a CrossFit gym, but the whole look of it is like a warehouse look. And I think there's like a little bit of a misunderstanding, there's not going to be heavy machinery or stuff going in, so, um, that's really just an entrance and exit, um, for, although there is an egress door in the back also, but it's more of an aesthetic look.
A lot of the gyms have a back door open for ventilation or like a looking at.
Is it going to have glass in the panels, or is it just going to be a solid door?
It's just a solid door.
And there'll be, um, my question is, uh, there won't be any working out or equipment for the, for the gym that, that gets put out in that area in the back behind, by the parking lot, and people are working out back there?
The intent is for people to work out indoors.
So, nobody's going to work out outside?
Yeah, there's, there's no intention of people working out outside, yes.
We're not putting any equipment out back there, no.
Well, they did, I mean, they did have pandemic, they.
That's common occurrence.
One of the CrossFit gyms did that.
Yeah, see a lot.
The other important point, so the people that are using the gym in a park, in the rear parking area, they're going to come into the gym through that overhead door in the back?
Correct, there's also a door, but yeah, the intent is that they'll walk in through the back.
They don't have to walk around the whole.
And what are the hours of the gym?
Currently, as the gym is, they have morning hours and, um, I mean, the, the tenants are actually sitting here, um, today. Um, I think it's like a six, seven, and eight AM in the morning, and then in the afternoon, like five, six, and seven PM. And then they have a twelve PM class midday.
Any other questions?
Uh, I'm just looking to see if there was something else that Mr. Marcus had to address.
One with that slide you should mention.
Oh, yes. We have, we have painted on the front of the building, the, uh, the street address.
Oh, for the photography studio?
I'd like Mr. Marcus to say have that back there, and if he believes it is, go ahead.
Sure, when we purchased the building and we were coming up with ideas to make it more aesthetically pleasing, we wanted to hire a local Asbury artist to put sort of like an art mural in that brick on the right side. In discussing it with the local artist, um, he came up with the idea, why don't we put numbers? So, kind of like kill two birds with one stone, um, um, I called the town, asked if there was, you know, I'm not playing on anyone, but I called the town to ask if there was any issues with putting the numbers on the building, like painting it on, and I was told that as long as, if a car is parked underneath it, it's visible to the street, so anybody could see it, so, God forbid, you know, fire or ambulance needs to see it, they'd see the, the numbers, that we'd be okay. It's come to my understanding that that's not necessarily true when it comes to numbers, um, but we believe that it does bring something to the building, and if there's an issue, the numbers, we're happy to put address numbers somewhere else, but we'd like to keep the numbers as we put it, because we feel like it adds character to the building.
Do you, do you look upon these numbers as part of the, piece of artwork on the front of the building?
That's exactly true, I mean, the building is black, it's stark black, and the point of the colors were to like stick out.
It really shows.
Yes, to, to make, we wanted the building to be a kind of building that people know, that it's easy for people to recognize, and that will help the town, especially that part of the town, um, come up and, and have more tenants, and, um, and that's part of the reason why we want to bring in this CrossFit gym, because we feel like it'll bring, um, more people to that area.
So, the numbers that they come to use in the building, do you recall the dimensions or how high they are?
I don't recall, okay, and I know I, the engineer.
But it suggests they're six by three.
I, I.
That's not the dimensions that are on the architectural.
Yeah, I don't believe, I think it's bigger than that, but the architectural plans has, um.
They have a thirty-six square foot box around it, and six square feet is permitted.
But if it's an art mural, then those are usually what you're going to paint, are you correct?
That's not this case.
Well.
You're making an assertion that you wanted to.
I, I, notice I said it.
If you made it like a mermaid with numbers in it.
Yeah, I mean, there was talk about making it into like an alive animal or something, and I don't know if necessarily you want to have like, the tattoo revisionist comment changed the picture to make it look like something else.
If it's like a mural, doesn't that have to be approved by the mural community?
Right, so, well, so, I, I, I think we look at it, it's a mural, if, if the board needs to be a mural, then the size requirements are not necessarily.
Yes, that's it, it's pretty big.
It's, it's a mural.
We have asked for variance as well, and obviously, we don't get the variance, we're going to have to do something else, but, uh, that, 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 that would be called, this, this artist that did this work, can you, can you be able to, because he, he's an Asbury product, and I think he, he has a reputation.
Could it be approved by the mural commission?
I think other people have used it, and he's truly Asbury work, resource.
Just, just because it's.
Yeah, his name is Bradley Hoffa, I know he was hired, like for senior now, depending on the boardwalk, I know he has murals around town.
Yeah, sorry, we're, I know we're talking about, we're just saying that if it's, um, if it were approved, that, um, is there, is there a process that would go to the Art Commission for approval, for the mural approval instead of?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty huge.
For a red.
You know that they, they have the power to say yay or hey, I think they're a recommending power, aren't they?
Or commission.
Right, so if, but if a mural is going up, then they have to approve it?
Yeah.
Well, they, they can make recommendations, but I don't know that they.
I mean, the issue is really.
They can go through a design exception?
The issue is like really setting a precedent for something this size, then, you know, if you get somebody else says, oh, well, they did it, and it's really, I mean, I think it's nice, I like it, but I think we need to have some other input. Yes, agree?
I would agree.
Yeah, I think they're more of a guidance commission, as opposed to if they say, we don't like it, and you, you, you have to accept their decision. They don't have any power, they're, they don't have jurisdiction over the board, you know, the site plan. I don't believe that to be the case, I could be wrong, but I don't think so.
But then our, and our choice is only to either accept it, I mean, in other words, I'm trying to understand it from a legal perspective.
From a legal perspective, our commission, they send it over, they take a look at it, they make recommendations, you may or may not follow them.
Right.
Unless there's something in the ordinance that gives them power.
It really does, I mean, if you're looking, there's a van parked in front of the building, and it really kind of obscures the seven, like if you're parked in front of it, you wouldn't be able to see the seven, so it doesn't really necessarily rise above vehicular, you know, vehicle parking there.
I, I don't know what picture you're referring to, I know when the artist was there, yeah, I'm, it could be the angle, I know he had his pickup truck right in front, he, and you could see above the pickup truck, um, the numbers clearly, but.
So, I'm open to whatever the, uh, the board, what does the board think?
Am I clear where our options are, sorry? So, we would refer to the art commission, they would make a recommendation, or do we make a design exception and then worry about setting a precedent?
Or you can make a design exception, but you're not setting a precedent.
Right, it's individual, so each application's individual.
It's entirely up to you, if you want a recommendation. I think there's something in the ordinance that says the murals have to be looked at, they do have to be referred over to the, uh, Art Commission.
Right, so we'd be doing a design exception for the size of what's there?
Yeah.
And being painted on the building.
And being painted on the building.
I know, other cases, we've sent it over, First Avenue Pavilion comes to mind, on the west side, a few others, you know, were sent over for their recommendations from the board to look at.
I think usually they go to the Arts Commission first, and if they're doing it, then they present, what they've come up with to us and say, hey, David George, this is.
All the cases, yeah, all the cases that I can recall, during my tenure, turn out where the applicant and the Art Commission usually can come to an agreement, and it's recommended back to the board, and it usually works itself out. They, unless, nobody's coming in with anything outrageous, then, you know, the Art Commission is just a no to, and applicants have always been able to come to terms with it. Twenty-one or twenty-two years, twenty-three years, however long it is, so.
Would you like?
Well, you can have that in your discussions, because there's a number of things here.
Yeah, okay.
That, it sounds to me like the plans have to be amended, because.
There's a number of things.
Greer's got to do a number of things to the plans.
Okay, so then we'll wait till we get further.
You may want to just have it all in one fell swoop, and have it come back.
Okay.
It's your choice.
All right.
So, I, I think I covered everything that we were talking about, Mr. Marcus covered more than you could have.
Okay. Um, any questions from the public? Okay, can we get witness? Pardon me?
I know.
No, not yet.
Yeah, at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Next, I'd call Mr. Edward O'Neill Jr., our registered officer.
Okay.
Have a little bit of Mac PC problem here.
Do we want to mark Mr. O'Neill's architectural plans as an exhibit?
Yes.
That would be A two, early?
Oh, act A two?
I think it's A three.
Is it A two or A three?
A one was Mr. Greer's, and A two was the engineer's letter, I think.
Our letter was B one.
B one.
Oh, B one, okay.
B, B would be for board one, so this would be A two.
P two.
Sir, please raise your hand, so I'm swear a testimony about the given this matter, the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Edward W. O'Neill Jr., capital O apostrophe capital N, E I L L, so I'm the architect, right then.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill, just briefly to the board, uh, state your, your credentials within the profession and some places where you have testified as an architectural expert.
Certainly, um, let's see, I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey and a licensed planner since nineteen eighty-eight. I currently hold licenses in New York and New Jersey. Uh, I also had the architecture program at Brookdale Community College, where I'm a full professor. I've testified before this board.
Yes, you have.
And I have testified before the zoning board, and I only, do I want to keep going?
No, that's good.
Mr. O'Neill, as an expert in architectural. Mr. O'Neill, you have produced, I believe, certain architectural plans, or do you have a scheme right now?
We mark those as A two?
I believe we mark them as A two.
We mark them as A two.
Okay, good.
Okay. Can you just give us an overview of what these plans were prepared for?
Well, this is a floor plan that shows the, the first floor of the building, uh, there are no additions proposed. These are the three tenant spaces, this is the commercial photographer, this is the pallet warehouse, and this is the proposed fitness center.
Now, uh, I believe there was, there's a bubble in these various, um, premises, uh, it's hard for me to read from here, but has to do with H D A C, does it not?
The bubbles, these bubbles?
Yeah.
No, those are actually amendments based on discussions with, um, Ms. Alonso. So, they're revisions from the original plans, uh, that were submitted, these have been revised as per various comments from professionals.
This is a revision?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. We had talked about, though, the fact that the H D A C was not going to be. Okay, we had talked about, though, the fact that HVAC was not going to be externally cited on the site outside of the building, can you explain that?
Yes, all, all the units have their HVAC on the inside, so there are no package units on the building. If, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just going to say, if, if, in discussions with Mr. Marcus, if there were any future HVAC units that were package units, and that were put on the roof, they would be put in the middle, so that they wouldn't be visible from the public way.
Now, also, on each of these premises, there's a trash room closure, can you explain how that works, please?
Yes, what we have done is included a trash room within each tenant space, each one is large enough to accommodate two fifty gallon trash receptacles. None of the spaces are heavily used, the, matter of fact, the warehouse has almost no use as far as, nobody works there full-time. So, we think that fifty gallons is more than adequate to take care of trash and recycling for the three spaces. Again, the fitness center, people are getting out, photography studio only has a couple of people working there.
How will it be collected by the city? How will it be collected by the city, will they go back there, or bring it to the street, or?
My presumption is that they'll bring it to the street.
So, in, in these trash areas, there's enough room to have these fifty gallons of, of trash, if that's needed, in some type of receptacle?
Yes, and fifty gallons of recycling.
Okay, and then what would happen is, it would probably, the receptacle would have a dark plastic bag in it or whatever, and what would happen then? Would they want to get rid of that garbage shovel?
Well, they would either bring it out and bag, or I would think that they would wheel it out in the containers. They would wheel it down the accessway to Third, the Third Avenue.
Will the tenants be responsible for bringing it out, or you have a manager or someone else who's going to be doing that?
Can I, I'd have to defer to Mr. Marcus for that.
He's under oath.
The tenants would, sorry. The tenants would be responsible for bringing their garbage out, which they have been so far.
Where would it be placed, um, adjacent to the street?
That I'm not, I know the tenants so far haven't been bringing their garbage out every week, or, or the garbage trucks come.
Is there a stop for garbage?
Yes, yeah, I was there when I saw garbage from the garbage, or us and Bruce were new, so there, I know there is a stop, I don't know offhand exactly where to replace the garbage.
May, is it normally accepted, Mr. Mayor, they, they brought it to the curb, but that's where it gets picked up on trash collection?
Yeah, I was just curious where along that, that hundred-foot apron that was going to be set?
You've got continuous vehicular access. It's a question, it's a real question.
I, I don't know if we've designated an area, I guess they, they have.
Well, you know, maybe possibly on that, the easterly side, where you're going to add the landscape, landscaping, maybe there could create a pad coming down there by the curb in that area, since it's already.
Yeah, my understanding was that prior, um, discussions, that an area over here was going to be additional landscaping.
I'm sorry, say that again?
There was going to be additional landscaping created here and on the other side. So, I would think that coming down the accesses would be the place, area to place them.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be two spaces removed, replaced with beds for trees. So, coordinating maybe two spots. No, there's two spaces.
Right, and one, one, one on either end, I think, was a can.
There's actually two.
What's the discussion?
I was, am I wrong?
I'm sorry.
Say that again?
Two, two spaces, two trees, correct?
Right.
So, there could be a coordination, however that is done, so that there's space at the end of those islands, in two places, so you can corral some cans, I guess.
We need a painted area in front of one of the trees, so we can do that.
Well, I would suggest that you make a more level area than the parking lot, the parking slopes out, and you might want to make it more level, so that it's not tumbling when the wind hits it. Find a way to make sure that they're secure and not spilling out into the rain.
All right, moving on to another topic, as long as everyone's satisfied what we talked about so far here. Can you address the question of the engineer to talk about the design that you have made here, its compatibility, and if not, is the kind of easy design that the city considers?
Okay, I'm going to jump down to these photographs. This is the building before it was painted. From what I could tell from the building, if you look from the inside, I think at one point, it was, it was either a warehouse, or some sort of an automotive repair area, because there are a number of overhead doors, when you look on the inside, that have been covered over. There was actually one, two, three, four, five doors at one time, I mean, I don't know how far back that goes. So, what we decided to do was to try to open those up as much as we could. And the other point, these photos are taken from the planner's report, and these were the, some of the buildings in the area, and you can see there, they tend to be stucco finish, they're flat-roofed, some have big doors, because, again, this was a light industrial area at one time. They're somewhat undifferentiated, so what we are proposing, whoops, is these openings here. So, if I go back to the photo, sorry, I'm jumping around, this window would get enlarged significantly, this door goes away, this door gets replaced, and glass is put around it, this gets enlarged, this stays, door gets replaced, this door gets painted, and this gets enlarged within the same opening, this door gets replaced. So, what you have is then, whoops, you go from glass being approximately twelve percent of facade to close to forty-two percent. So, it'd be glass, this is, oh, door surrounded by glass, glass, so this is the fitness center. This, and this door stay because that's the warehouse, and even if it was glass, then you'd just be looking at pallets, so it doesn't seem to be something that's appropriate. And then this would be in the commercial photography studio, and again, the door to the studio.
So, the materials in the facade that are illustrated on it, that's existing, they're just all painted black? Like, there's not a change to any of the materials?
Right, it's patched, so, because some of the parging was in bad shape, so it's a direct set, I'm sorry, cementitious stucco finish, that is again painted black.
So, I, I learned a new word in office called finstration, I had no idea what it was, these windows.
Windows.
And I believe you said we have forty-two percent, but I think sixty percent are required.
Yes.
Why couldn't we not go to sixty percent?
I think it's because of the warehouse. If the warehouse were to become retail or something else, and you took the overhead door, and you did to this door what you're doing here, then I think we hit sixty percent or very close to it.
But right now, we don't want to show a bunch of wood pallets there in front of the building.
Yeah, I mean.
Now, the planner did say, Mr. O'Neil, that we have not delineated the entrances well enough, and we have done, you know, not, not shown enough differentiation on the length of the building, so it's not going to be boring and whatever, you have a retort to that?
Retort.
Yeah. Well, I have a comment. Um, what we've done is, again, this overhang exists, so the overhang is being reskinned in metal panels, and then these signs stand up, and they center on each of the tenant spaces. So, given the existing conditions and context, I feel professionally that this articulates the entrance.
So, when you say they stand up like, the canopy's like this, and the sign is like this?
Yes, and that, behind it is a triangular bracket, which is fairly common, it's not reinventing the wheel. So, we think that these signs differentiate the spaces. There is a comment that, again, a lot of times in ordinances, they attempt to have the building pushed back and forth across its length, but this is an existing building, so pushing it back and forth.
Do those signs comply with the size limitations?
Yes, yeah, well, with the exception of the nine seventeen.
Right, except for that.
The other signs would all, would all conform. Uh, we also think that having this bottom piece here as diamond plate steel, which takes some of the beading off the building, as well as it has a certain aesthetic look, the interruptions of that also accentuate the entrances.
Can I ask a question regarding the window at the photographer, and why that window is different from the other windows? In terms of its proportions, you know, they have square panes, that's got rectangular, and it's squeezed up, and it's.
Well, the, the window that's here is bigger, and so we just dropped it down. I think we could make it match these, this is actually a little wider. It's just a, something that's there, so we could.
Let me, go ahead.
The window by the photography studio, that was existing, we didn't do anything, that's how it is.
All right, I, it would be my strong suggestion that when you're making this transformation, that.
They all.
They all be. Because there's, there's enough quirkiness in this facade right now. When you're trying to mesh the new and the existing, right, and the warehouse use and the firehouse door, so, I, I would strongly recommend that you mesh them.
I have, I have no problem with that.
All right, I, I think that we addressed all of the specific questions in the engineer's report, and given the planner's report, with Mr. O'Neil. The board has any additional questions?
Should we go through the planner's report? I mean, it's pretty extensive, I want to make sure we cover everything. I think we should probably just go through the planner's report, if that's okay.
Well, yeah, let's follow, with your architectural and signs, I think.
Yeah, there are a lot of, a lot of things in here that I want to make sure we cover them all. Um, so, let's see where we'll start.
The architectural building design comments are on page six. And, uh. On the first comment, building. I think, I think, you know, architectural compatibility, I think it's been shown that it's, it's similar to other industrial or commercial buildings in this area in terms of its height and its composition.
You didn't really need the exceptions or anything for that.
No, that's, that's.
Okay.
When you get to a four point two on page seven, the building modules, it was just testimony about the existing building.
Window transparency, who did that?
The windows, right, so they talked about that. Um, windows and transparency, they're falling short of the sixty percent, forty-two percent, so they don't comply with that.
So, we have to give an exception for that, right?
They, they do.
It's a variant.
Right.
Oh, it's a variance, okay.
Right. Unified appearance, uh, I think, I think it is coming together, actually, I think that in terms of unity, you know, when you paint everything black and just have green accents.
I think they.
So, I would submit, in my opinion, I think it has been unified through the color treatment. Building entrances, we talked about that, if you, if you agree that the signs are enough to identify those entrances, then it would conform with that. Feastery and friendly design, there's no change with that, there's no furnishings or anything, place at the street, I don't know if this is an architecture question or not, but it's a design question. Doesn't comply with any, there's no street furnishings or anything that's required. Okay, there's been testimony on page nine I about roof protrusions, there's been testimony that there's no HVAC equipment, that's also really gay. I think if you decide to put something up there in the future, it'll have to be reviewed by the zoning office, and you may require an amended site plan.
Absolutely.
Uh, particularly if it's determined that you need to add any sort of element to the roof to screen that. So, at this point, there's nothing on that. There was a discussion about the, on page ten.
Well, I just want to go to the planting design, yeah, I want to make sure, I just want to recap that, make sure we all in agreement with what that is.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go too fast.
No, that's okay, so the rear parking lot, which you've already illustrated, would be screened with hedges, shrubs. Then, there's going to be two trees in the front parking lot, and along the eastern side, there's also going to be a hedge, a screening hedge, correct?
That's the testimony that I.
Right. Okay, got that, Jack?
No, but actually, are you going to actually, are you going to want to see these plans, or would you offer revise before you vote on them?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay, so then I would make them condition, if not approval.
Oh, okay.
It's a, it's a retard.
Maybe, maybe far fewer conditions.
Yeah, ultimately, they could work it down to very few.
Got you, that makes sense.
Could, could, wouldn't that normally be handled as a resolution compliance issue?
No.
No, that's what I said, that's what we're discussing, you'd even have to come back for review again.
We couldn't get a building permit unless the, the engineer.
No, they won't, they have to be. And now, we, we tried that once, tried that once a number of years ago. It turned into a disaster.
Didn't go well, yeah.
Want me to keep going?
Yes.
Okay, on page ten, at the top, we talked about the recycling and the refuge, and there's been demonstration through the architectural plans that have been revised, that there is room inside for the cans, we're going to have to work out how those cans are managed out in front, and I think the two trees give an opportunity for that, so, thinking about it, leveling it off, and making sure they're not blowing around.
Give exception.
The only thing with that, and I, I can't remember, just put it into some type of language, that they follow the city ordinance as far as the refuges, just because I don't think fifty yard contain, fifty gallon containers are legal on Asbury Park. So, I don't want you to go out and buy fifty gallons, and then, guess what? Everybody's picking it up, and guess what, we don't pick up commercials to begin with, so, and we definitely not allowed to use black paper, uh, plastic bags. So, just, they, they comply with the.
Comply with the city.
Comply with all the city.
Moving down to, on page ten, still planning design, exceptions required for street trees. I believe even though that they are providing two in the parking area, those do not satisfy the street tree requirement, so.
Right.
Um, it's still required, parking lot screening, the screening in the front, they don't have that. We talked about parking lot shade trees, they're going to put two in the front, but they don't have any in the back, so, they're going to still need that. They've agreed to provide wheel stops, so that's not an exception anymore. Parking lot landscape area, you're going to do a new calculation, I heard, based on the, on the addition of the plant material that's going to be added. And you will, on page eleven, you agree to comply with section thirty dash fifty-seven point twelve point C with respect to all the planting notes and details that are required by ordinance. Most people just say, yes, we'll do it.
Yes.
Uh, in terms of the, on page eleven, the lighting, there was testimony about that, they testified they'll comply with the color temperature lights, they probably will have to switch out the lights from what they proposed in order to get the correct color temperature at twenty-seven hundred K. The illumination levels, they said they don't comply at the property line, and in terms of illumination levels, we did a double check on this, they exceed the one-foot candle average, but the uniformity is good. Now, hopefully, when they get a new, with the new fixtures, it's still good, but the uniformity conforms. Signs, a signing plan is required, they have not submitted a signing plan, and this is pretty, it's required to have letter style, lighting, color, construction materials, height of the sign, height of the grade above and below roof line, location, and any other standards. That's not been provided, the only details we really have are the details showing the location along the building facade, and then there's a, an elevation that shows how it's going to be mounted, how each of the sides will be mounted to the, the awning that comes off of there. If, if there's going to be a sign plan, you need to tell them, provide a sign plan that has all these things.
Yes, definitely need that.
There's been a lot of discussion about the prohibited sign, which is the painted sign, it, it's, it's not permitted, in addition, it exceeds the maximum permitted area for commercial address of six square feet, if you look at the dimensions on the architectural plan, it's thirty-six square feet. You guys can consider how you want to treat that in terms of whether there are grand exceptions or not. There's no sign illumination other than the external sign illumination, so there's no requirements about the color of the light that's illuminating the sign. And then, the last thing is just that there, you know, there's a affordable housing development fee that's required for all commercial development. I don't know how it would apply to this, but the construction code office will ensure that you comply with whatever that is, and you're on notice for that.
So, y'all are clear on what additional information we would need? Okay.
Thank you.
Any more testimony?
And I'm happy to answer any questions of my report.
I believe that Mr. O'Neil has given us his testimony on direct. If there's no questions in the public and the board has no more questions, I'd like to call Andrew Genue, who's our planner.
Can I make sure, does the board have any, any additional questions?
Mr. Donner, if you're gonna come back with revised plans that are gonna reduce the quantity, it sounds like the quantity of exceptions, perhaps variance and/or the degree of the relief that you're requesting, would it be more prudent to have your planner speak when you see the ultimate product?
Yeah, I, I think, I understand what the board wants, but I don't think that the overall difference is so extraordinary that at the expense of the client to bring back this professional another time. I think we can.
Can I, can I, Mr. Genue?
Let me just make sure there's no other questions.
Can I have, can I have a moment with Mr.?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
We'll make any question. You, yeah, did you say, does the board have questions? Were you gonna receive some of the?
That was, we can say it when we're gone.
Hmm? I think there's just a question, and he's, he did a testimony, I don't know.
No, they're coming back.
Shall we wait? I guess.
Mine is a very minor thing. I was just, I should have asked when the site plan was up, but then there was a comment that the impervious, the coverage was gonna be discussed by you, so this is actually on the other, on the site plan drawing? And it might just be that my brain is not comprehending right, but when it says exist, on page two of the site plan document, it says existing lot coverage, and then it shows the proposed, and then on the bottom, it shows the existing percentage. And it just confused me as to why it didn't show.
I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. Gareto.
That would be an engineering question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to defer to Mr. Gareto.
Yeah, that's an engineering.
It is, but how come, but during the testimony, then it said, we're gonna talk about pervious with the architect.
Why, when they come back, tell them, tell them you want it to be addressed.
It's just a.
Well, it's gonna, isn't it gonna change anyway, because they're putting in landscaping, they're putting in planting beds and stuff?
It's gonna change, but then this table still needs to, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's like, it's being creepy. It says existing lot, which is the.
I can't see, it's too small.
So, it's all the existing, the signature's proposed. But the table's called existing, and then it shows the proposed, it doesn't show the proposed. Change.
Oh, no, it doesn't. Well, it says, it says it in the report, that I think it'll have ninety-seven percent of the.
What I'm saying, it shows it on the table above. It just doesn't match. It's a minor thing, it just confused me. Cause ninety-five percent is existing.
Right.
And the proposed ninety-seven, I didn't add up those numbers, I don't know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, it's in the wrong location.
Never.
I think, I think the report says ninety-seven, proposed is ninety-seven percent.
Gets even more exhausting.
I think there's ninety-seven, proposed.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Well, it's gonna be different, we just have to make sure that they.
We're not.
That's right, it says, only rose with the good.
Or, or.
There'll be, there'll be population.
It's literally like a label. It's just a label. That's all.
It's more exhausting.
Could I ask the board what the next date would be that's available for us?
Marie, do you know what the next available date is?
I know.
The only reason I ask, you know, we have a tenant that wants to get in, you know, just, I'm concerned, I wanna meet all the board's requirements, so I'm concerned about if outside pressures.
We would be looking at December twelfth.
December twelfth, no?
Oh, wait, wait, no, cause you have to revise the.
You gotta have stuff in three weeks ahead of time.
Yeah, correct.
Three weeks.
For them to review, ten days, for the public to, but ten days, three weeks is the internal requirement so that the reports can be circulated, so that you're not come showing up in a meeting and not having the results of.
So really, we're not, we're not looking until January?
We're looking at January. Which would be January twenty-third.
January twenty-third. I think, we wanna do the right thing. We wanna make sure Mr. Genue addresses all of the variances in the right proportions and everything else. So I think what we're gonna do is follow the suggestion of professionals and the board, and cut off the meeting at this point, come back on the twenty-third with hopefully perfect plans in place. Okay, we'll work very hard to make sure they are, and then we will put Mr. Genue on to address the design waivers and variances such as they may exist.
Yeah, I think based on tonight's comments, there are a number of sections that are not gonna be applicable any longer, so that makes good sense.
I would encourage just in the expediency and recognizing that there's two holidays between now and then, is that, or maybe more holidays, there's a lot more holidays. Anyway, if there's a question about something, as you're recommending these plans, to give a call, I'm not speaking for Doug, but I'm sure he would pick up the phone as well, just to make things move, if there's a question about which way to go.
Yeah, or if you're not clear on what the board was looking for, definitely call engineering, planning, or me, from a legal perspective. So definitely make sure we address it, if you have the right questions. I wanna thank the board for your great attention and time and patience, who else, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I get a motion to carry to January twenty-third without further notice?
Marie, you have an agenda? Get it on the agenda, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Someone may.
Move to carry.
Oh, and, Don, will you wait any time?
I'll second it.
We have to act if we, we have no. Do you need a motion to second?
Yeah, so.
Got a second.
No, I have to take them. She, she moved.
You'll have second.
Your second, okay.
Yeah, we need a, a vote.
All in favor?
Believe me, don't get bogged down.
Is there anyone that is?